And if you're like most people, you just pitch it in the trash because you think ballot for what? That's a survey or something. I don't want to do that. But it's a paper ballot. You can vote like that, or there's a QR code on the ballot where you can put your phone in and it'll figure out who you are, where your district is, and you can vote like that. You can also vote, if you Google P E C election 2025, you can vote like that. You can also vote at any of the P E C offices. Of course, there's one right here in Bertram. But there's 50,000 people in our area and only about 5,000 or 6,000 people vote. So I was just asking y'all to, if you're going to go the trouble to vote, I would appreciate your vote and I'm one of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Monica Gonzalez?
My apology. I thought it was just a sign and sheet. I don't have anything.
Are you sure?
I'm sure.
Okay.
For now.
Okay. Consent agenda items, 1.1, February 11th, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the regular meeting minutes from.
Motion by Lane.
Second.
Second by Pat. All in favor, raise your right hand. And that motion passes. Department report, 2.1, Police Department Monthly Activity Report, Chief Kyle.
Button or anything?
There we go.
All right, we'll go through this real quick. Total calls last month were 230 calls, decreased a 34% from the almost 300 the prior month. Total arrests, there were three arrests made this last month, all three for traffic violations. 40% decrease from the prior month. We kind of got a break there. Traffic stops, they also made 219 stops last month, which is 3% decrease from the 26th of the prior month. And let's see, anything new? Grant updates, the audio camera grant is Motorola's installing everything now. Hopefully first of next month, all that will be operational and get that thing over with. The Flock safety camera grants that we got, everything is done on that. We're just waiting now on the Flock security camera things to get put up. That is about that on the Police Department. City Code Compliance, we've had, we had one, two, three, four, six different code issues we addressed last month. All of them have complied or issued a warning citation. And strays, the dogs, we had, we had the animal cruelty case. Actually, that was first of this month. And then we had 11 animal calls and we're down 30 out of our contract of 40 for the year. So we're doing pretty good. We have a lot of spaces on that. That's about it.
Good. 2.2 Municipal Court Report and Monthly Activity, Connie Fliss. Georgina, can you?
The March 2025, or sorry, February 2025 report for municipal court, total payments received $15,142.84. There was 95 new cases filed, 73 cases disposed of, 24 warrants closed, zero new warrants. There was one show cause hearing and 12 pre-trials.
2.3 Development Report and Monthly Activities, Cindy Sanchez.
Cindy's report that she prepared, there were 375 various inspections done by Bureau Veritas and there were, there were 34 new permits issued with a valuation of $457,998.
3.1 Utility Engineering Group, Gary?
Yeah, provided my monthly memo. No updates to that, but happy to answer any questions if you have any.
You guys have any questions? Thank you, Gary.
So I did, so I'm going to add to Gary's report that he is 60% complete on Lift Station D. Did you put that in there?
I have.
60% done. Mayor and Adam have both gone through those documents that Gary submitted. There is a couple of questions, but other than that, we turned it back over to Gary. So the ball went back to Gary.
I like that. 2.4 Utility Department Report and Monthly Activity, Adam Lambert.
We had two water leaks this month, one sewer backup. We installed one new pump at Lift Station D, pumped roughly 9.2 million gallons of water for the month. Completed 114 work orders. The guys finished the concrete work on the selfie sign in the park. And then our last two generators at Roach and Crenshaw were finally installed. We also have four new hires with one of them starting on Monday. The other three have already started. And so far, they're doing actually really good, so thankful to have them. Bertram Oaks, they're still working on base work on the streets. Kerb and gutters should be done by the end of tomorrow. And Denbo's still on site working on electrical. Still moving quick.
Good. Thank you, Adam. 2.5 Current Financial Status of the City, Georgina.
So for the month of February 2025, in the general operating accounts, there was $3,66,361.32. In the enterprise or utility fund accounts, there's $23,947,146.89. Combined total of $27,113,508.21.
Really good.
Most of those are restricted funds.
Yeah, I know. Who is? Public Notice, 3.1, Bulk Trash Day, April 5th, 2025, permit required. See posted notice inside City Hall. It's like we do every year. If you don't, if you're not familiar with it, we have a bulk trash day. You can come here and get your permit. Doesn't cost you anything, but you do have to have that to be able to show up to dump 3.2 Public Hearing to Consider a Replat Application from Jeffrey and Loretta Phillips. Owners are requesting to vacate lot lines for property located at 110 Western Avenue. Legal description, Block 4, Lot 1 and 2, Fair Grounds Edition, Burnet County, Bertram, Texas. All citizens have the opportunity to speak and be heard in regards to any of their proposed projects. So if you have anything at this point in time that you want to talk about on 3.2, now is the time to do it. Come up here to. State your name, please.
Hi, my name is Monica Gonzalez. I own property on Eastern Avenue and I just want to check to double check, make sure this, if this is going to affect property lines in the neighborhood, in the general area, or is it just that particular property?
I mean.
Just that property.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Action Items, 4.1, Discuss and Consider Resolution Number 593-031125, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bertram, Texas, authorizing an agreement between the Bertram Economic Development Corporation and Rayford Davis Construction, providing for a grant, providing to add sign to storefront in Bertram, Texas.
So the next two action items on your agenda today, Mayor, are EDC requests for approved sign grants through the EDC. They have these grants posted and approved unanimously, all of the next four agenda items. For sure.
Thank you.
They all have the same resolution?
Well, no, they've got different resolution numbers, so we need to approve each individual one. But I just wanted to state that they were all approved for $2,500 to the four different.
So it's a do one for each one?
Oh, no. 593, 594. The numbers are different.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 593-031125 to approve Rayford Davis Construction for the sign.
Second.
Second by Lane. And that motion passes. 4.2 Discuss and Consider Resolution Number 594-031125, resolution of the City Council of the City of Bertram, Texas, authorizing an agreement between the Bertram Economic Development Corporation and Better Now Physical Therapy LLC, providing for a grant payment to add sign to the storefront in Bertram, Texas.
I'll make a motion, we pass Resolution Number 594031125.
Second. A motion by Lane and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.3 Discuss and Consider Resolution Number 595-031125, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bertram, Texas, authorizing an agreement between the Bertram Economic Development Corporation and Bertram Fitness, providing for a grant payment to add sign to storefront in Bertram, Texas.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 595-031125, an agreement between Bertram Economic Development and Bertram Fitness, providing grant payment to add the sign at storefront.
Second.
Got a motion by Randall and a second by James. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.4 Discuss and Consider Resolution Number 596-031125, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bertram, Texas, authorizing an agreement between the Bertram Economic Development Corporation, OCI Liquors LLC, providing for a grant payment to add sign to storefront in Bertram, Texas.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 596-031125, Bertram Economic Development Corporation and OCI Liquors provide payment for storefront sign.
Second.
Got a motion by Randall and a second by Lane. All in favor, raise your right hand. 4.5 Discuss and Consider Resolution Number 591-031125, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bertram, Texas, authorizing an electrical project by the Bertram Economic Development Corporation in the city of Bertram, providing for reimbursement of expenses to the city of Bertram for parking lot electrical project in Bertram, Texas.
So this one is for adding electrical out here to the back, outlets for festival trailers, EDC, part of EDC's parking lot project. The city provided, is going to be providing the labor and install of that electrical equipment. Adam wrote up a cost estimate on what it was going to take to add that electrical and the EDC approved up to $5,000 to do that project.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 591-031125, expenses, proven expenses up to $5,000 from the EDC for electrical and parking lot.
Second. A motion by James and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.6 Discuss and Consider Resolution Number 592-031125, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bertram, Texas, authorizing the purchase of planter boxes by the Bertram Economic Development Corporation from Austin Welding and Construction, providing for a payment for planters for project in Bertram, Texas.
So this is another EDC project to help, look for the right word, beautify downtown Bertram, make it more appealing by adding planter boxes to the intersections near and around the blue signs. This will purchase four custom-made planter boxes and we're going to be working, or they're going to be working with the garden club, Bertram's Garden Club, to install plants, native plants in those boxes.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 592-031125 between the EDC, repay them back $3,380 for the planter boxes.
Second.
Got a motion by Randall, a second by James. All in favor, raise your right hand. Discuss and Consider Public Utility Commission of Texas 2025, Consider Price Index, CPI Adjustment to Municipal Telecommunications Right-of-Way Access Line Rates.
Yeah, so this one is pretty standard. It comes out of the PUC. Does it, if you don't take any action from a council, then it automatically goes, I believe it's like 1.4, is that right? 1.4% that it went up this year? Yeah, 1.7, 1.478, 5% is what it goes up for the CPI for inflation. Or you can decide not to accept it, which basically just means that the city won't receive anymore. I mean, PUC is still going to get theirs. The city won't get that 1.4%. We'd have to send a notice to them by, I believe it's into April. Yeah, April 30th. Not the first time I've seen it so far this year. So by April 30th. And if you don't want to do it. If you do nothing at all, then it goes into effect.
Okay. Nothing.
All right.
Motion 4.7. 4.8 Discuss and Consider Ordinance Number 239-031125, an ordinance declaring the unopposed candidate for the position of two aldermen in the way in the May 3rd, 2025 city election elected to office, canceling the election, providing for a severability clause and providing for an effective.
All right, I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 239-03115 to forego the May 3rd election.
Second.
Got a motion by Randall and a second by James. All in favor, raise your right hand. 4.9 Discuss and Consider Annexation Request Letter from Danny Floyd, Lewis Park LTD, for property located along railroad tracks approximately 22 acres, situated in the Luciano Cabasso Survey Number 3 and being a portion of a called 25.67 acre track. Danny, did you, nothing? Y'all know where Danny's property is at? It's the one over here by the school that they purchased.
Y'all know, we bought that school from the, that property from the school a few years back and some of it's not in the city, some of it is. And to develop it, we need to ask for annexation on that 22 acres that isn't in the city limits. But we also want it to be done in conjunction with the development agreement, making sure y'all will give us permission to develop it and issue us the L U Es and that kind of stuff, too. So it goes hand in hand.
So tonight, we're not actually annexing it. We're just accepting his letter and we're going to prepare a serviceability letter to Mr. Floyd on services that we would provide, basically all the city services that the current city, citizens of Bertram get essentially. And then at the next meeting, it'll be done by ordinance if that's.
So just a motion to accept tonight?
The letter to move forward.
To move forward.
To move forward with annexation.
Yeah, we don't want annex today anyway. Like I say, we want to get the development agreement hammered out and all that. So, yeah.
And you couldn't annex it. So this is just, does the city want to? That's all we're asking you.
All right.
If you want to move forward, to move forward, because there's notices that have to go out, like Georgina says, we have to get a service plan together.
I'll make a motion, we move forward.
I'll second. 4.10 Discuss and Consider the Village Development and Annexation Agreement Proposed by Danny Floyd, Lewis Park LTD.
So I'm going to let Gary, because he document the most, I think, out of all of us. There really was, there were some asks at the back of, in your packet. There's a whole, what, 25 bullet points or so?
There wasn't much.
Yeah, there wasn't much. What I'm saying is variances to the ordinance, though. There was, there was some, but they were very minor. And I think they're easy to walk through. The actual agreement itself is easy enough if we could, if we could get a motion to allow staff to move forward with negotiating this agreement so that the concept plan is coming to you guys next month and we can pull it all together at the next meeting. Just so that you're aware, I wanted you guys to have your eyes on this development agreement, not necessarily to move it, approve it tonight, but to, or today, to move forward with allowing staff to negotiate this with the concept plan, in conjunction with the concept plan that has been submitted.
Good. Just kind of let y'all know, the biggest thing on there that we're asking is the variance to 50-foot wide lots, just because of the location and the size of the track. You're talking about right next to railroad tracks. We're trying to make it affordable for Bertram people and we have just been talking to two local builders to do the buildings instead of trying to bring in the big boys. And anyway, try to keep it affordable, try to keep it local, but y'all know.
Yeah, the density isn't quite as large. I think there was what, 100 and?
104.
104.
There won't be that many by the time we get through, because there's going to be some trees in there we need to keep. You know, that's just the maximum we could do is 104. So we were trying to lock up at least 100 L U Es, maybe 104 L U Es and that kind of stuff. Before we move forward, we need to make sure we got sewer and water, too, you know? I think they're getting close to your limit, right, Gary? So, anyway. But I have given, you know, the check for the sewer areas.
He did write a $500 and some odd dollar check.
$581,000.
$581,000 check is written by Mr. Floyd. I do have that, I've not cashed it. We are, so all of this is pending, concept plan at the next meeting and moving forward with a DA that I feel confident we can negotiate through with, along with the concept plan, if you allow us to move forward.
I'll make a motion, we allow staff to move forward with the planning process.
I'll second.
A motion by Randall and a second by James. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.11 Discuss and Consider Replat Subdivision Application from Jeffrey and Loretta Phillips for property located at 110 Western Avenue. Legal description, Block 4, Lot 1 and 2, Fair Grounds Edition, Bertram, Burnet County, Texas. Applicant requesting to vacate lot lines, making into one lot.
This one's pretty simple and straightforward. You've had a couple of these come before you over the past few years. This is just a, there was an existing home on the property. They're moving that one off and bringing in a new home, but the lot is platted as two separate, or it's a portion of two platted lots. The whole purpose of this plat is to delete the center lot line so that they can avoid building setbacks. So that's all they're doing is deleting that line, doesn't change anything on their boundary. They own the property and have for multiple years. The only outstanding comment that we had was on water and sewer. They have current water and sewer taps with the city. We just asked that the city verify that they're in a good location, don't need to be upgraded or anything. Once that's done, so the recommendation is to approve with conditions that Public Works looks at the location, makes sure that nothing needs to be done on the water and sewer, but approve the plat as submitted to amend the one lot line that's the center.
Okay.
Center lot line.
Thank you, Gary.
I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item 4-4.11 to allow the lot line adjustment.
A second. Got a motion by James and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. 4.12 Discuss and Consider Proposal from Next Bill Pay for Credit Card Processing Service for utility billing.
So these, so these people here, Next Bill Pay, actually work with R V S, which is our utility billing software. This will, currently, we charge 3% to run credit cards here at the window. This company will allow them to run it at a cheaper rate as well as online. Currently, we use, what do we use? Somebody else, but they charge way over 3% when you pay online. So this was just a cheaper option, who is already dealing with our utility billing software. They partnered with utility billing that we currently use. So I recommend that we utilize their services because it will effectively save money to our customers.
Good. Thank you.
I like that idea.
Make a motion, we approve Agenda Item 4.12 for Next Bill to take over as our credit card.
Second.
Got a motion by Randall and a second by Lane. All in favor, raise your right hand. 4.13 Discuss and Consider, I don't even know how to say this.
Coloic?
Coloic? SAA Solution Proposal Agreement for User Licensing with CopSync for Police Department. Chief?
Yes, sir. CopSync is the program that we use for citations and reports. It is one of the cheapest ones that's available out there. You'll notice, most of our officers are actually called reserves, part-time, because we get a cheaper rate at that. It's the same access, so we achieve as much as we can on it. That's actually about the best price we're going to get for any kind of software for the report system.
So Mayor, the only question that I just asked the attorney, didn't they file?
Yeah, they filed for bankruptcy last year. Have we heard anything about restructuring or if anybody acquired their interest?
They were bought out. That's what the processes are going through. They keep saying there's going to be no changes, but this is like the second or third time they've been bought out. Like 10, 15 years.
Yeah. The confidence I have in Coloic staying put as a unit, they submitted a three-year and a five-year. I included the three-year in your pack because I don't feel confident that the five-year will be, they'll be around in five years. So I included the lesser of the two options. Of course, there is a, another option that you should be aware of, but I didn't put it in your packet because I thought, we'll see how three years go first.
All right, thank you.
So that's what's in your packet.
Approving the three-year deal, correct?
Yes.
That's what's in front of you.
That's what's in front of it.
All right, I'll make a motion, we adopt, approve Agenda Item 4.13 to let CopSync be the provider for the.
CopSync.
Citation reporting. Okay.
Got a motion by Randall?
Second.
Second by James. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. 4.14 Discuss and Consider CIDO 2, 2024, 16- and 12-inch transmission main, TWD, number 62865, B-Bid Analysis and Recommendation for Award to JM Pipeline for $7,971,074.13.
All right, so this is the transmission main that replaces the eight-inch transmission main coming into town. It's about 12 and a half miles from the well field to town here. It has tie-ins to the stand pipe out on 330 and then to the new elevated storage tank at the wastewater treatment plant that we'll be discussing later. But we opened bids a few minutes after your last council meeting last month, had 13 bidders respond. All of them were responsive. They sent in all the documents that were needed, so they're all qualified bidders. The low bidder is JM Pipeline LLC from Cottonwood Shores. Their total bid was $7,971,074.13. Bids ranged from almost $8 million to $16.6 million, so a pretty big spread there. The bottom three or four were all pretty tight, so we were happy with the bids that were submitted. But our recommendation is to award it to JM Pipeline. But our recommendation is to award it to JM Pipeline for their total bid price contingent upon Water Development Board and TCEQ approval. We received comment, one comment from TCEQ earlier this, or late last week. I addressed it yesterday, sent it back in. Water Development Board also issued a few contract modification comments for our bid documents. We submitted those back last week, so they're reviewing that. So it'd be a contingent award. Once that's done and we have the, the full approval of, of Water Development Board, we'll have to submit full contract documents. So that's what we're here for today is award it. We'll prepare the contracts. The contractor will prepare the bonds and sign the contract and get all of those documents, insurance, everything that we need to make a complete contract. We'll bring that back to you for the mayor to sign and Georgina to sign. Then we'll submit that to Water Development Board, so they get another review at it once all the documents are together. So that's our recommendation is to award it to JM Pipeline and move that project forward. Beyond that, we'll be talking, the last agenda item is an executive session item to talk about the elevated storage tank. Got some discussion on that, but funds are available to award the project, so that's our recommendation.
What is the, what is the proposed start? Where are you looking at as far as?
And timeline.
Timeline.
So the, it's, it'll take at least 60 days to get it through Water Development Board to get a notice to proceed out of them. So I'm hoping, you know, early summer, we're in construction and it's a 400-day contract, so, you know, a little over a year.
Make a motion to approve agenda item 14, uh, 14 to award contract to. Pipeline for $7,971,074.
I'll say it.
Got a motion by James and a second by Randall, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. 4.15 Discuss and consider ordinance number 282-031125 and ordinance of the City of Council, the City of Bertram, Texas, releasing property known as 2837 County Road 321, Bertram, Texas, from the City of Bertram. Extraterritorial jurisdiction providing for the repeal of ordinance in conflict here with providing a saving clause and providing an effective date. Over here, sir?
Right.
Okay, thanks for writing those big words in there.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I mean, that's extraterritorial, that's just, not much I can do with that.
Okay.
So yeah, basically the legislature in the last legislative session entered into a bill that allowed for individuals or entities that are in the extraterritorial jurisdiction or ETJ of municipalities to request that they be released from the ETJ. There's certain exceptions to it, like if there's a military base or things along that line, we don't have any of those exceptions. So actually as, we really don't have to do anything, it could just go as an operation of law, but we believe, based on the research, that this was a piece of property that's actually not in our statutory ETJ, that we have a half mile for being a general law type of city of our population. But it's, so that was done by an ordinance by agreement back, so we felt like it was, since it was done by ordinance, even though we got a statute, let's just put an ordinance in place just to make it clean. So the bottom line is if you do nothing, then at the expiration of 30 days, which should be coming up in the next week or so, it would be released from the ETJ anyway, so.
Well, we have a whole ordinance 68, that's a whole book of properties that wanted annexed into our ET, or they wanted, included in our ETJ back, way back before any of us were even here, working here, not in the Bertram. Ordinance 68, so that dates it way back. A binder full of people who wanted, landlords who wanted in Bertrams ETJ, because they didn't wanna get swallowed up by Liberty Hill or Burnet or anybody, so they wanted to stay within Bertram. So it was done by ordinance, Mike was saying it's gotta be released by ordinance, because we, because it was all done by legal description and it's, there's no 2337 County Road 320 in, on those documents, so it was hard to tell. And I told Mike, I said, let's just do an ordinance and just include it in there, because I don't know.
So in, you know, being our ETJ, we, the city doesn't have a CCN that would include that piece of property, particularly the convenience and necessity, so it doesn't include, I believe that's correct, right? It's not, it doesn't go that direction. So we don't, there's, we would have some subdivision regulation, now it's gonna be up to the county to do that. We don't have zoning. So there's really not a big issue with regard to releasing this property from a city's perspective as far as any oversight or anything. We don't get any property taxes from that piece of property or anything like that. If in the future, the owner, current owner or future owner decided that they wanted to be annexed into the city, obviously we'd have to get adjacent to them first, but it could still be done by petition. So it doesn't really change a whole lot from the city's perspective, so. We're not, we're not losing anything.
But in the future, if they ever want water, it's gonna be harder for them to get water from the City of Bertram if they want out of our ETJ.
That motion to release, would it be better to get a motion to release?
I, I would just, a motion to pass the ordinance.
I make a motion we pass. Agenda item 4.15 releasing County Road 2837.
That's.
2837 County Road 321.
So passing ordinance, uh, 282-031125, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Randall and a second by James, all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.16 Discuss and consider pump and haul agreement amendment with Lenar Holmes for Bertram Oaks.
So this is a carryover from last meeting.
Y'all remember the agreement that we had to pump and haul actually expires in four days, the way we had it, but they didn't actually start the pump and haul process until February 24th. So that whole period that the, the agreement was in place, they were doing no, no pumping, except for what, last 20 days, not even 20 days. So that, what we did is we, we did the agreement. I, I put the agreement that's in place that allows it, because we had, it's six months by statute, which would get us to August, but the, I think the discussion was the end of April, maybe May, you'll see in the agreement, I made it till June 30th. And so basically, they can use the pump and haul process up, up to June 30th. And I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that, don't?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for having us. The only thing I would like to say is that the lift station is currently under construction and parts are ordered and we hope to have the lift station complete in April, no later than May. So given that with construction, you do run into delays sometimes, but that's our goal, so.
Have y'all gotten the electronic components that you're waiting on?
We expect them in April, so.
That's, it was April, May, it was the discussion last time, and that's why I put it the end of June, just to give a month buffer, just in case, hopefully, hopefully we won't have to revisit it. But that's where we're at.
We'd like it to be completed as quickly as possible ourselves, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Need a motion to approve, correct?
Yes, to approve that.
Okay, I make a motion we approve agenda item 4.16, pump haul commencing when?
Well, I mean, it's current, but we would, we're extending it to June 30th.
Extending to June 30th.
30th.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion by Randall and a second by Lane, all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.17 Discuss and consider Economic Development Corporation Board reappointment of April 2025 through March 2027.
So I, I put a recommendation in your packet and they were only in their, on how they were, how they were submitted. So Evan Milliron, Katie Duke, Rachel Parks. I did put something in your packet, right? Oh yeah, I did. I thought I wrote something. Are all up for reappointment and then there was a couple of new applicants, CY Ingham, Leland Rayford and then myself as an alternate, alternate two, back onto the EDC for appointments and those were all of the people that applied. Mr. Rayford came in at the last minute to put in his application, so now the board would be complete with these appointments.
Alright. So do we need to do each individual one or just?
You, since she's got the list, then you could, somebody could just make a motion to, if they wanted to appoint all positions.
Yeah.
They could.
And they're all full positions, they're not like filling in midway or anything, they're all full.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah, I'll make a motion we approve agenda item 4.17 to appoint all listed members to the EDC board.
Second.
By Randall and a second by Lane, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. 4.18 Discuss and consider Municipal Development District Board reappointments for term year April 2025 through March 2027.
So the three people that were up for this board, and this board is specific to street-related projects, I think that we met once last year. The appointments for this board, or the reappointments being requested to be reappointed are Elizabeth Predmore, Connie Fliss and Cindy Sanchez, all want to be reappointed to this board. We didn't get any other applications for this board.
Okay.
I make a motion we approve agenda item 4.18 to approve three individuals that are listed as.
Got a motion by Randall.
I don't wanna. Tom.
He needs to do that. One of those needs to second.
Need a second?
Please.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second by Lane, all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.19 Discuss and consider creation of a part-time office assistant position. Georgina, can you elaborate more on that?
Yeah, I, we are in the process of, you know, everybody's seen the effects of the growth here at City Hall, but we made some changes last budget year when you approved the additional PTO time and request off. I really feel that when the staff is gone here, there's a lot of times you guys could come in here and there's one person in this building. It's unfair to the clerks when somebody's out sick or somebody's on vacation. I'm at a meeting, so there's only four of us in this building generally during the day, but if one's out sick, one's on vacation and I'm at a meeting, there's only one person here, which happens a lot of the time, as well as there isn't a whole lot of time to cross-train because we're staying busy in our, in our fields that we're in. And I'm hoping to bring in somebody who wants to come in on a part-time basis and learn from the ground up, that I can mentor in city government and grow within this position. So she could start cross-training on every, every position and be that filler spot when we need it, when there's somebody out sick or what have you, because it's earned time, we gotta approve it. So that's what I'm recommending for this, for this, till this budget year ends.
That's a good idea. We have the money already set aside for that. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item 4.19 to create the part-time position.
Got a motion by James and a second by Randall, all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.20 Discuss and consider action receipt of resignation letter from Chief Dwayne Kyle. What happens if we don't accept it?
Yeah.
Can we just say no?
Yeah, he can still leave.
Well, I think we need, at least we need a speech from Mr. Kyle.
Four score and seven years ago.
Yeah, something.
I make a motion we.
I mean, are we gonna get a speech or anything?
I haven't prepared anything. I wanna thank you guys for letting me fulfill a lifelong dream here. Hopefully we got you guys up and running to a point where you're ready for the growth.
Well, thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Thanks, chief.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we accept, a motion to approve agenda item 4.20 to accept the resignation letter from Chief Kyle.
With heavy hearts.
With heavy heart.
Got a motion by Randall.
I'll second.
And a second by James, all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. Congratulations, chief.
Hey, he said five years, when he, when we hired him, he told me five years.
It's been six.
He made good on that promise. Yeah, so he made good on that promise, so yeah, we're lucky to have him for another year.
I'm gonna be about two blocks over.
Alright, 4.21 Discuss and consider appointment interim police chief during the police chief's search process. 4.22 Discuss and consider JM Diesel invoice for 385928 for repairs on F550 Super Duty impossible lawsuit. 4.23 Discuss and consider cities permitted water supply and expansion of water sewer system and supply option. The City Council, the City of Bertram reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during the course of this meeting.
Mayor, before you close it?
The, the first agenda item with regarding the interim police chief under personnel matters is actually up to the individual who is being discussed to determine whether it goes into closing opening. My understanding the request is to stay, 4.21.
Yeah, I spoke to Officer Brantley and he wants to stay in open session with this action item.
Okay. So we can do 4.2?
We can, we can do 4.1.
Okay.
So I'll begin by saying I met with Officer Brantley a couple of times and we discussed the position of interim chief, the dynamics of the department, what his experience was and his feelings behind wanting or his interest in becoming interim chief, because he hasn't been chief before, but neither was Mr. Kyle when we hired him. I felt like in his department and speaking with the mayor that we, we have, the department is, is being left in great shape with Chief Kyle and the leadership and the expertise and experience that Mr. Brantley brings to the department is gonna be valued in the future. And he's agreed to do it on an interim basis to see if he likes it, to see if we like him, see if it works out. And my recommendation is to appoint Jason Brantley as the interim police chief for the City of Bertram Police Department. Yes, and his salary require, requirements, what he status current rate, it's currently hourly rate, plus giving him additional stipend of $1,000 per pay period until the, till and if we make it permanent. And he's in agreement with that salary.
I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item 4.21 appointing Jason as the interim police chief.
Got a motion by James and a second by Randall, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Congratulations. The other two, we're gonna go into private session, okay. So it is now 12:54 and we're going to adjourn into private.